Our first meeting in our new facility here at the basement of the courthouse. So I'd like everybody to rise and recite the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Commissioner Bauer is joining us by Zoom again today. Public comment. Public comment here. Please state your name and so we all know.
My name's Stephanie McDonald. I am a county resident and I reside in the Shannon Township. And I wanted to come to you guys today just to talk about what's the idea of a community here? Because I saw the city of Atchison shared a 2021 Atchison community survey, but it was only for city residents, but it dealt with things that I believe are county related were impacting as well as county residents would impact us. One of them is that it important for the city and county to have a positive and productive relationship? And I want to say like which part of the county because I kind of feel like right now the city has been disregarding county residents' voice as far as city projects impact on us. I've been here before to talk about the airport, but I want to talk about a couple of other things that they asked on the survey. One of them was the Atchison Fire Department provides first responder services for medical emergencies. A service also provided by Atchison County EMS. The city fire department provides the service to ensure the fastest possible response time for city residents. But why is it faster for city residents? Why aren't we all just sharing one? I know that they have the majority of the calls. I believe that was what was discussed at the last meeting, the percentage of where the calls lie. And I just wonder why the city residents have an option for a faster service? I'm not sure if the question was worded poorly, but it just kind of felt like the county EMS isn't good enough, which it's like, that's our fault. It just was a very weird way to put it. Do you believe the airport is or could be a significant benefit to the community in terms of economic development? It's not for us. We're dealing with our 286 road needs maintenance. I don't know if you saw on the globe, but during a recent tour of the Hanger Museum, Karen Seaberg said that they're expecting 78,000 annual visitors to the Hanger Museum, which is, I feel, a very positive outlook on it. I don't know if I would say that is something that I would believe the actual, I think it might be a little bit smaller, but even 50,000. What's the impact on our road? It is the city, since it's one of their properties, are they going to help us recover from that? The Shannon Industrial Park was another question. Industrial growth at the Shannon Industrial Park, the more trucks we have going down on the road, the more damage is coming. I talked to Casey and I should have, I'm sorry, talked to you, Mr. Knoll. We've been having more and more commercial trucks coming up and down our road with combined with the airplanes. Just makes it not a very peaceful place to live anymore. And when that Tanrai explosion happened up the road somewhere and people were obviously online asking what happened, one of the comments under a post that thought it was MGP, it wasn't obviously was, it figures. They should have forced them, MGP, out to the Shannon Industrial Park years ago. Another one, if it is Midwest, what the heck, that's not what they said. Does the city keep on allowing them to build onto and make, why don't they make them move out in the county and rebuild? So it feels like, like a dumping ground. It's like if the city residents don't want it, it can go up to us and we don't have a say apart the impact. You know, the city can say we're county residents, but they very heavily impact our, you know, way of life out there. And I just wonder with the recent fire we had on 286, I saw that Effingham and Lancaster had responded for an interlocal agreement that we all had with them. And the city of Atchison provided, I believe it was oxygen tanks. But I was wondering if there is a fire at the airport or the industrial park. Justin never got back to me if it would be something that would be city responsive, but like, would they expect county help dealing with that? When we wouldn't get really any city assistance, we would have to benefit from the rest of the county. I don't really see a net positive for the city towards us. I don't see a positive relationship being fostered. And I just kind of see like a continued disregard of if it's a community survey, we're not part of it. It just is the feeling and with everything with just put it out in Shannon, it's like, I feel like we're very low on the ladder as far as their concerns. So I just want to express that with that in, you know, light of residents comprising the community, but not county members is what I've been feeling is what the community is defined about here.
Yeah, you raised several points. I mean, I think we probably warrant some discussion because I'm not exactly quite sure on the status of like the mutual aid with the fire departments. I do know because I, someone asked me about whether the city had provided any mutual aid. I knew they came out and done the oxygen tanks and I talked with Wes Leonard about that. I think that those arrangements are, have improved in the last few years with the fire departments and mutual aid as far as what I've been hearing. So that's, that is a positive. On the roads, I mean, like the 286, that's our road. But it is a valid question or a point. I mean, the city has made forays into us providing them with funding for city streets, but yet some of their, like you say, the Shannon Industrial Park and the airport are on our road. If there's that much traffic, maybe we should ask for help back. So several points that I think you've got beginnings of a, I understand where you're coming from.
Seventy eight thousand people seeing our road in the condition is a very good reflection of Shannon or the county. And like I said, that's, that's a pretty big number. I don't, but even conservatively, that's a lot of people to see that. You know, it just doesn't look like the money is going to come back towards us as far as the economic, you know, boom, they stated the airport would be for the area.
Thank you.
Jack, have anything?
He's not.
Jack, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
All right.
Just making sure.
It looked like it was frozen.
Yeah, I know.
So we were checking. Thank you. Thank you very much.
So I just want to say.
It's been still for a chip.
Thank you very much for coming. I love when the public gives us input because it makes us think about things that otherwise might not come to, come to light. I will say I did not take the city of Atchison survey, but I would like to look through that and see what you're talking about. A positive relationship, I think all three of us can say that's what we want to have happen. Drawing lines in the sand has happened and historically and even to my visits with the two prospect city managers that are coming in. This is a big deal. We need to stop doing this. We need to be, you know, Atchison County should be a community. We should be not worrying about who's going to provide fire service to your house, you know, but have those understandings. And that's why joint communication I have been bringing up over and over because I don't want it to get to that when it comes to public safety. Like we can do all the politics and arguing about things. But the county versus city, that the perception you're getting from what you're reading, that is absolutely not what I, I want. And we need to fix that and we need to put our constituents first when making decisions and having discussions. I appreciate all of this information and I will do look into it, you know, and bring that up. And you're speaking to the county commission. So a lot of these things that are city is at the city commission level, but I feel like I have, I can communicate these as here's a constituent in district two that is picking up on the vibes that we're sending, right? And, and at the end of the day, have the hard discussions of how do we, how do we make this better?
Well, I think in, it sounds like vibes from both directions.
No, absolutely. Yeah.
Yeah. So I get it.
Yeah, that was, thank you for all of the examples because it helps us.
Any other public comments? Not seeing any. Did everyone have a chance to see the minutes and was there any additions or corrections?
Do you want to make a motion to?
I would move that there. I would move that there. Accept it as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Three to zero. Commissioner comments and committee reports. Okay, Jack, you want to start?
Well, I had, I had a project concern meeting last Wednesday and they're moving along fine in the pandemic, but they're having the same challenges with labor, getting help that everybody else does. They're not immune to that particular situation, but they're working really hard to make things happen. I have a communities correction meeting tomorrow at 11:30. So that's why I did notice on Facebook that there must be a, the Atchison County Health Department isn't accepting any appointments this week because I think they're all sick. So I don't know enough about that. But I think they said that if you needed more, if you needed a vaccine or a test, they're available CVS, help the community health department, Walmart, and maybe some other places. So that, the other comment I make is this is a new setup for this room. By the way, it looks super. But I especially like the psychedelic carpet. But the first row where Mary and Mark are sitting, you can see them perfectly. But Stephanie is sitting back, the only I could see are her shoes. So I mean, that's okay. Maybe when people need to speak, they should come up for the first row, just an observation. That's all I have.
Right? Go ahead.
Okay, so first I just want to let everyone know that our thoughts and prayers go out to all the city staff for the passing of Commissioner J. David Ferris. We got that news and I know everyone here has been thinking about him and our condolences are with everyone affected by his loss. He's a really nice guy. Last week I had an EDAG meeting on Wednesday, senior village meeting on Thursday. And I went to the city manager meet and greet Thursday evening and was able to meet Amy Finch and have some really good raw conversations with Joe Warren. Friday, Joe Snyder took me out for a road tour for, with our road and bridge issues. So that was very informative and, and eye opening. And I got to listen to his plans for how to, how to make some, some bigger strides in the county. And then I just also wanted to say thank you to the city of Atchison for adjusting the wording on their legislative response. I used commissioner comments last week to let my constituents know I had an issue with it. And it was heard and they tweaked that. So I very much appreciate, appreciate that. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. I had kneecap board meeting last Thursday night. And I got elected as the treasurer for that organization. So more, more fun for me. And that's all I have to report on for, from myself. I've got a, I have to go to Hiawatha Thursday then and meet with Carrie Wilson from Area Agency on Aging and also do kneecap in the same trip for bookkeeping type stuff, so. Next, reports of elected officials and department heads. New business, Kim Pruitt, joint communications. Kim, are you on? Yes. We've got a PO. What, Jack?
Oh, it shows that she's on.
Okay, well, should, shall we just?
Go on, just explain it.
Okay, I'll do, all right, I'll explain it then. We have a PO for a geo-based normalization services, which is basically is going to plug in the complete addresses in a county into the 911 database. So when they get a call, it just doesn't say this address, Atchison County, it's actually going to say Route Everest or which Effingham, whichever maybe it's to Hoover and associate, associates in Jefferson County, Missouri, an amount of $3,500. Do I hear a motion to accept the PO?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Passes three to zero.
Thank you, Eric. I couldn't get my button and muted fast enough.
Okay, is there anything I left out? If you heard me.
No, you, you did, you did really good.
Okay, well, you briefed us well this morning, Jim.
Thank you.
Next, I bet the sports complex maintenance request from USD 377 and ASAF here at the ball fields. This is the maintenance agreement that we've had for, since the start, this has started an amount of $2,500 for USD 377, which maintains the ball fields at Effingham and $10,000 for ASAF with the ball fields here on the west side of Atchison for a total amount of $12,500. Any discussion? Do I hear a motion?
I'd move to approve.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Anyway, it's been, any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, and this one only has room for the, for me to sign. Next is Atchison Guidance Center Agreement for Services. Did you get a copy of them or should I? Just wondering how this. Matt, did you say that this was a common practice to, to do this from years past and we just hadn't done this for a while?
That's what I was told. I did not do any investigation about it. I don't recall having done them in the past. For the past five years or so, I don't think we have, maybe Michelle.
No, that's, that's, that's what I received from Keith was this is something that they used to do. It's kind of been, not been done as well. They're wanting to get back on it. I don't think it changes anything as far as what we pay them. It's just kind of like a guideline of what they, the agreements between the two.
Okay, I noticed it's the date is blank. Should that be specified before we pass it? Or will that just be something you fill in?
I won't fill it in if you don't.
Okay. Keith Ricker had came last week and spoke with us and then his new employee being groomed to take over was Adam, what's his last name?
Buman Wiggs.
Hmm?
Buman Wiggs.
Okay. It was nice to meet him. So if there's no, is there any discussion on, on this? Jack, I'll make a, I'll ask if there's a motion to accept the Guidance Center and Atchison County Commission Agreement for Services.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Um, I'll just explain. So the Guidance Center Agreement with Atchison County just kind of outlines what we already went through with our appropriation discussion last year that states that the county shall pay the center a sum of $73,000 for the calendar year of 2022. And then it just, they will submit us financial service reports semi-annually. And then we will look at the annual report and this funding will be looked at on an annual basis.
With that, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 I, I think they, they also had another question that involved the crisis stabilization center appropriation, special appropriation you have made. Because that, I think we were under the impression it's going to start being with first and not going to start until, was it September? And so they had asked a question about whether you wanted, whether the commission wanted them to, or would allow them to use that entire appropriation as startup costs? Or whether you wanted to suspend payment of that until the last quarter of the year? And I guess it's not, wasn't on the agenda and I didn't notice that until May.
Is that something we want to do now or, or wait until, discuss it next week?
Yeah, I don't know the amounts. I just remember that was the discussion, so.
The Guidance Center, 73,000 is what was approved. And then the Regional Crisis Center, the total that was approved was $29,574. Just FYI, as county clerk, I normally do those payments mid-February. So we'll definitely want to have something in place prior to me issuing those out, which you guys would approve those, but and have knowledge of when they go out anyway, but.
Okay, so we want to have a discussion about that next week in morning session or do we want to have a?
Your call.
Let's, let's put it on the agenda for next week in the morning. Okay, next is Lloyd Group LLC, ARPA consent form and engagement letter agreement.
Terminal, the new engagement letter that was emailed to me, Scott Lloyd. And also sent it to all three commissioners. I think the page three reflects that, the maximum total that we would pay for services.
Arfe, including travel and out-of-pocket costs will not exceed 120,000 without prior approval from Atchison Administration, for, excuse me, from county administration. So, but all other parts of the agreement are the same, mostly.
Everything is the same.
So is there any discussion or questions about that?
Um, I would just like to say thank you so much to our financial director, Mark Seltner and Mark Wilson on the county staff. I had questions this morning and they jumped through to be able to get answers so that we can. Basically, my question is where we initially signed an agreement with bullet points of, of an understanding of what we needed. And from that time to today, the needs have changed. And so they revisited that, which ended up getting us a 10% savings because now we have Mark Seltner in place along with Mark Wilson that can handle much of that in-house. So I appreciate you guys very much for, for doing that so that we as commissioners can do our due diligence and, and understand what we're signing. So thank you for that.
Okay, well, do I hear a motion to approve the contract with the Lloyd Group LLC for ARPA? It's been moved. Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes three to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
It was one little addition here. We have a PO for 2022, 2022 membership dues for the Atchison Area Chamber of Commerce. Membership. What call does this entail us to?
Um, that is strictly the membership. I know in the years past, we have done like a bundle. But we, we had some issues because with the COVID, we didn't have the chamber banquet. They didn't have the golf tournament the first year. So in 2020, we paid memberships for the whole bundle, but we didn't, we got the chamber banquet, but they didn't have the golf tournament. So just in 2021, we got the golf tournament paid for due to the 2020 memberships. So that is strictly just the memberships for being a chamber member.
Okay. Any questions?
I haven't seen it and I would like to look through it. I just, I have constituents that have concerns and I just want to understand what we're getting, what we're paying for, what we're getting and how we're contributing to them. Last year, when we approved our appropriations, Jack, did you ask for, didn't you ask for updates? I thought we asked for them to come before us and give us.
Well, I think we asked them to come for the Main Street project. They should come and give us a regular update once a quarter. We should ask them to do that.
Okay.
This is just for a bit. This is just for a membership, right?
Right. So do we do a bundle then? Because like it would be nice to participate in their banquet and their.
I don't know. Are they having the banquet this year?
I haven't heard. Do we want to just wait and put that on for next week and find out some more information? Because you said you wanted to read it and look through it or are you ready?
I mean, after looking at this, yes, I, for just this, that's fine. But if we negotiate a bundle, then this will just be part of that.
Or we'd have to reapprove or anything additional.
Okay, perfect.
So I can, I'm just saying I can make a phone call and we can put something back on next week if you want to try to.
Okay.
Wouldn't take more than a phone call.
I mean, I'm sure they'll honor that. Right. Yeah, we're good. I'm good.
Okay, so do I hear a motion to?
Oh, make a motion to approve.
Okay.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass three to zero. Okay, old business, county councillor updates.
I, I already can answer.
Any need for executive sessions today? Not seeing any. Public comment? We hear a motion to adjourn.
Do you care if I have a couple of comments really quick? I'm just looking, I'm just looking through of what I had this morning to get clarification and how to send that out to people instead of. So I had wanted last week to make a motion to rescind the joint communications resolution and make that county ran. I just wanted to say that my fellow commissioners. I just wanted to say that my fellow commissioners, um, understand where I'm coming from. However, they, um, are, they would like to understand the unintended consequences uh, prior to seconding a motion that like that. So, um, just kind of keeping everyone up to date that I, I'm following through. It's just I haven't got to where, um, I can, I don't know the unintended consequences. I can have conversations with folks at the city, um, and here, but I don't know what that is. Even though we're not following the resolution, what the unintended consequences are. Don't know that. Um, let's see what else. We will be putting the Memorial Hall trustee board position. Um, I didn't know what the description was on that, but that'll be on our website. And then also we will be doing some instructional information on our website to show you, uh, tax sale questions. I've gotten those too. Um, and there's a place on the website where you can sign up for notifications for tax sales. You can sign up for notifications for our agendas weekly. So we will work to get that information out to the public so that it's easy to access. And when you ask me and I tell you I don't know, this will give you at, you will know at your fingertips when, when decisions have been made like that. ARPA, we're still in discussions. Um, we're going to be meeting with the department heads to kind of go through that list of of what we have, um, I think. I think that was, I think that's pretty much it for now.
Okay, anything, Jack? No, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.